Evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. This evening's consent agenda includes one item, the Personnel Action Report, an addendum to the Personnel Report, and that concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
All right, is there a motion? Is there a second? Second. All right, Chrissy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Deanna, yes. That passes unanimously. Dr. Oakley?
Thank you. I'm pleased to announce Tawana Cook as the Principal at GTCC Middle College Jamestown, Noelle Keener as Principal at location to be determined, and Ashley Young as Principal Supervisor.
Thank you. Congratulations. We're now at our public hearing on the Superintendent's 2425 Budget Recommendation, and we have, I think, two speakers signed up. Barbara Maccabee... I'm sorry?
I think a few more have signed up.
Oh, okay. I don't have all the rest of them, but I'll get those. Barbara Maccabee followed by Siobhan Spite. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Ms. Barbara Maccabee, I live in Jamestown, North Carolina. Good evening, Dr. Oakley, and ladies and gentlemen of our school board. Many of you know me, as I've served Guilford County Schools since before 1999, first as a volunteer, then as a substitute teacher for many years, as a fifth-grade math tutor at Sedgefield Elementary, then about 10 years as a TA focusing on small group learning. I retired because of COVID and some pre-existing conditions, volunteered once we were allowed back in the schools. Finally, I was invited to join the tutoring program almost two years ago, and as my husband said, "It's like The Godfather. Every time you're out, they pull you back in." I come to you this evening on behalf of all the tutors at Guilford Elementary, and I'm sure that I speak for all the tutors who have worked so diligently these past years under the federal grant program. I brought with me tonight some data that one of our first-grade teachers from our Walk to Read Program initiative. I'll give the copies to one of your reps for you to read at a later time. This is only one of the many interventions that our tutors provide at our school. Our tutors have made an amazing and measurable impact on the students of Guilford County Schools, as you well know from reading previous data reports. But our jobs are far from complete. We all know that the entire country was at least one-plus-years behind because of the gap COVID left in education on our young people. For the past few years, our students have been performing exceptionally well in small-group settings. Our tutors have established positive relationships with those students who are much more comfortable in these small-group settings. The students are not afraid to ask questions in the groups. They learn at a faster pace because the lessons are concentrated for the students' individual needs. The focus is placed on their weak spots. We know immediately if what we have taught, they have indeed learned. We know to target specific areas that the students need to catch up to their grade-level expectations and beyond. We have seen firsthand the positive influence we have had on these young lives, not only by enabling them to learn, by building their confidence, but by giving them the specific tools that they need to perform in their classrooms on a daily basis. Finally, we love our jobs and the service that we provide. We are asking you to please continue the tutoring program by providing the necessary funds that are strongly needed for these students. We promise to continue to do our best to ensure that those students thrive and perform to the utmost of their ability. We believe in our children, and we know that you definitely believe in our children. Please continue this vital program in Guilford County Schools. Thank you so much. As always, Barbara Maccabee for the children and today for the tutors. Thank you.
Thank you. Siobhan Spite, and I hope I'm saying your name correctly. Welcome.
My name is Siobhan Spite. Almost right. I reside here in Greensboro, North Carolina. Good evening, Dr. Oakley, Madam Chair, and members of the Board, and to my fellow educators, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. You are the heart and soul of the nation. As a dedicated employee of Guilford County Schools, I serve the staff and students and families of Triangle Eight Montessori Elementary located in High Point. I have worked for GCS as a teacher and a curriculum facilitator, which is my current position, at both elementary and middle school for 28 years. I am a product of Guilford County Schools, as are my children and their children. On behalf of the seasoned certified professionals working at Guilford County Schools, we are asking for step raises for 15-plus-year veterans, teachers funded from the Certified Local Supplement. Why is this important, you ask? Each year, we are reminded that it is our moral imperative to do what's right by children. We are charged with the responsibility of providing them with a sound, basic education. Willingly, we accept the challenge, and year after year, we are inundated with more responsibility. We mentor beginning teachers. We take additional roles and responsibilities at our local schools for the sake of teacher leadership. We participate in professional development and attend conferences that are often not funded by the district. We work after hours, attending after-school events and activities, and at times, we spend more time at school than we do with our own children. The bottom line is, we stick and stay. Truly, it is a labor of love. We wipe drool off the faces of our students when they arrive in the morning. We put lotion on ashy arms and legs. We brush hair and straighten crooked ponytails, literally and figuratively. We heal hearts, and we allow our children to know that they have a place in this world, and that there is no limit to what they can achieve. And what is the worth of all of this? It's priceless. In the same manner that we care for our students, we are asking our district, our beloved GCS, to care for us. Let's be clear, it's about the money, and rightfully so, but it's also about commitment, honor, reciprocity, and trust. The budget passed by the North Carolina General Assembly disrespects, dishonors, and devalues veteran teachers. As you are aware, our pay flatlines from year 15 to '24. We need the state of North Carolina to put some respect on the value we bring to education. But until this happens, we are asking you, we are asking you, we are asking you to stand in the gap, to use a fair portion of the monies allocated for the local supplement to fund step raises for our 15-plus-year veteran teachers. We implore you to invest in us in the same way that we have invested in the district and in the education and well-being of our students, because Guilford Schools needs Guilford's help. As a GCAE member, I am glad to see there is alignment in most of our priorities and do look forward to the final ask further reflected in the district priorities moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on the budget? Please come to the podium and say your name. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Tessa Penley. I'm a third-through-fifth-grade EL teacher at Union Hill Elementary, and I'm in my 10th year as an educator, all with Guilford County Schools. One thing I know from a decade in the classroom is that our schools are and have been underfunded by the North Carolina General Assembly for far too long. Attacks on public schools continue to intensify with our school district, as you all already well know, losing tens of millions of dollars to charter schools every year, and the new private-school voucher expansion program that is set to siphon off an additional 12-plus-million... thank you, short session. ...from Guilford County Schools next year. There is no question that, as Spite said, Guilford Schools need Guilford's help. And in this time of urgency, we are calling on you, the GCS Board of Education, as well as the Guilford Board of County Commissioners and our community at large, to help our schools now in the face of continued attacks from the extremists and the privatizers who seek to dismantle our public education system. Because what's scary is that we see and feel the impacts of those efforts every single day. We see them doing their best to make it untenable to build a career in public schools. And we know firsthand the devastating impact that this has on our students, compounding the racism and classism and ableism that so many of them already face. There is no question Guilford Schools need Guilford's help. Our students, our staff, our families, our entire Guilford County community needs you, our local elected leaders, to stand up to Raleigh and protect our public schools from the crisis conditions that their attacks are creating. This means stepping boldly into desperately needed leadership. This means accepting responsibility for addressing the crisis, not just talking about it. And this means doing what it takes to ensure that there are sufficient local funds to increase pay for certified and classified public school workers so that we can keep our colleagues and effectively serve our students. This means planning for a future that sees all public school workers paid fairly for the important work of educating the children of Guilford County. Because the General Assembly has and is still creating an emergency situation in our local schools, we are calling on you to step up and do what needs to be done to mitigate that harm. Guilford Schools need Guilford's help. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joanna Pendleton, followed by... Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Joanna Pendleton. I live at 4,003 Coltswood Drive in Greensboro. I'm speaking tonight as a parent of three GCS students, a GCS school librarian, a member of Public School Strong, and the President of Guilford County Association of Educators, our public school workers' union. As many of you know, before the Superintendent's Budget Presentation at the last board meeting, about 100 public school workers from our union, GCAE, rallied just outside this building to give the workers' budget presentation. We stood together because our schools are in crisis. We know that our General Assembly is underfunding our schools and playing games with taxpayer dollars to siphon funds away from public schools to unaccountable private schools through vouchers. And that's why Guilford Schools need Guilford's help. In Guilford County, we are a community that loves our public schools and believes that every child, regardless of race, class, gender, or ability, deserves a great public school education. In the last few years, Guilford County has made historic and heroic attempts to mitigate the harm caused by budget cuts from Raleigh. As a community, we came together to pass the largest bond in our history, in our state's history at the time, to rescue our neglected school buildings from disrepair. Our local government has scraped together millions of dollars to supplement the state's abysmal pay to school workers to try to stop the bleeding as our teachers, bus drivers, custodians, and other school workers leave this profession for better pay and working conditions elsewhere. As our staff and students can tell you, these improvements to pay and working conditions are appreciated. Thank you. But all of us here know that it's also not enough, and the blame lies with our state government. When we delivered our petition two weeks ago, we shared over 2,300 of our coworkers' signatures representing their commitment to the following demands. One, reinstated meaningful steps for school nutrition services employees. Two, step raises for 15-plus-year veteran teachers funded from the local certified supplement. Three, funding for the classified pay scale improvement at the projected market rate from the 2022 pay scale study. And four, implementation of the full five-year commitment to the local certified supplement increase. We see most of these demands reflected in the Superintendent's Budget Proposal, and we urge you to adopt the proposal as your official budget request. We look forward to working with you to get the full funding that we need for our schools in Guilford County as we bring our demands now to the Board of County Commissioners and the North Carolina General Assembly. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there's no other speakers, is there a motion to close the public hearing portion of our meeting? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are now at the approval of the budget. Dr. Oakley?
Thank you. Yes. Tonight, we will review the 2425 Recommended Budget for Guilford County Schools, and we'll start with just a brief review of the budget timeline. As you know, tonight's budget hearing and vote is another step on our budget process timeline, and we'll look at the remaining steps on this timeline at the end of the presentation. We should be able to see the timeline here.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We can just click if you want. Yeah. Yeah, there we go. So assuming we have a vote tonight following the hearing, we will not need the May 24 meeting. We will immediately put the budget forth to the commissioners. You can see the county manager presents their budget recommendations May 16. They then have work sessions between May and June. The county commissioners' public hearings June 6, and then the interim budget would follow their budget ordinance at the end of June. So those are kind of the steps that we will follow as we move forward. We're going to tonight talk about two things briefly. We'll review the 2425 local budget requests for funding from Guilford County, and then we'll talk about the 2425 proposed operating budget. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Henry to walk us through that part of the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Oakley. Let's look at the 2425 budget request recommendation, and we'll talk in more detail about the total operating budget in just a moment. Here you can see the estimated mandatory cost increases for 2425 that the district must plan to operate next year totaling more than $8.3 million. Salary and benefit increases are based on the 2425 increases reflected in House Bill 259, the 2023 Appropriations Act, or the BAEAN budget. So you can see on here, we have legislated salary increases for our locally-funded teachers, assistant principals and principals. We also have central office and non-certified staff legislated salary increase, as well as 3% for school nutrition. The BAEAN budget does have the retirement rate decreasing and the health insurance rate increasing, and then we've included growth in charter school enrollment. Then that $2.7 million represents how much we would need if just based on increased enrollment, if the county doesn't give us any additional dollars. And then the growth in the charter school per pupil amount of $1.1 million if the county funds the full $8.37 million here. We also have $900,000 included for our liability insurance. The growth of the number of charter school students... I'm sorry, I've already covered that. All charter school students, the $1.145 we would need if we got the full $8.3 million in funding. Thank you, Lisa. As you know, the rising cost of living has had a direct impact on our teachers and classified staff. It's important for us to acknowledge that you have advocated for increases to our local teacher and principal pay supplements, and we've been working with commissioners to support our teachers with a local supplement that is competitive with our surrounding districts and the largest districts in the state. Since fiscal year 2017-18, the Guilford County Board of Commissioners have increased the teacher supplement by 58%. However, as we've shared before, Guilford County Schools is one of four counties excluded from the state's $180 million teacher supplement funds. Our neighbor, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, receives an allocation of these funds. As a reminder, during our budget discussions with the county commissioners last year, we committed to providing our teachers a $1,000 retention bonus using ESAR dollars in lieu of the commissioners providing funding to increase the local supplement. You can see the impact of this decision as we look at where Guilford County is in comparison to other districts. The 2425 budget recommendation includes $10 million to increase the local teacher supplement. I also wanted to acknowledge that when we look at the current year's classified salary schedules, we know that the funds allocated last year by the county commissioners allowed us to implement the first phase of recommendations from the salary plan, which was to create a salary schedule that eliminated grade and step compression. The schedules that were created maintained 30 grades. The number of steps were reduced from 55 to 25 steps, allowing employees to reach maximum rates earlier in their careers. Rates increased from each step in a grade, as well as between grades, addressing the issue of step and grade compression that had been an issue in previous salary schedules. The change to the current year's salary schedules addressed structural issues with the previous salary schedules and brought rates closer to market values, but there is still work to be done. The Classified Staff Compensation Plan's next steps include pay school nutrition employees on the same grades as other classified employees, compensating them for years of experience, create consistent differences between steps across all grades, reduce the number of grades to create meaningful distinctions between jobs of varying scope and impact, and raise pay rates to be more comparable to market values. The 2425 budget recommendation includes $8.6 million for Phase II of the Classified Staff Compensation Plan. As we continue moving our district forward, we must attract and retain experienced and qualified employees. Thus, we are requesting increases to cover the cost of the local teacher supplement, the cost of implementing the Classified Salary Plan, and safety and tutoring costs that have been funded using ESAR dollars. The safety investments we've made include scanners at middle and high schools and emergency radios. The cost for emergency radios is for our annual subscription. Also, the startup costs for new schools include items that we can't purchase with bond dollars, such as clocks, small equipment like laminators and classroom materials. The total compensation, safety, and tutoring estimated expense increases total $23,154,343. We will need $3,252,448 to increase the per pupil amount for all charter school students if we receive the additional $23.2 million from county commissioners for compensation, safety, and tutoring. This is a summary of the 2425 estimated cost increases. We start with the 2324 one-time dollars used to balance the current year's budget. The $10.8 million includes $1,770,490 to increase the per pupil amount for all charter school students if we receive the additional $10.8 million from the county for one-time dollars to fund the 2425 mandatory expense increases. Combined with the 2425 legally required and sustaining operations total and the 2425 compensation, safety, and tutoring expenses, the recommended increase is $42,362,739. We have identified reductions and redirections of $2 million to bring our request to the county commissioners to $40,359,721. When we add that $40,359,721 to the 2324 county appropriation, we are requesting a total county appropriation for our operating budget of $300,585,794, which is a 15.5% increase over the 2324 appropriation. We are also requesting $17.7 million for capital items that we are unable to use bond dollars to fund. Now let's talk about our 2425 operating budget proposal. As we wait activity from our state legislature for the State Public School Fund, our budget proposal of $485,033,601 is based on the 2324 allotment formulas. The state planning projection is based on an estimated average daily membership of 65,954 students. In our local current expense fund, as we just discussed, the recommended county appropriation request is $300,585,794, a requested increase of $40,359,721. The local budget scenario also includes $3 million in fines and forfeitures and a little over $1 million in interest earned on investments, bringing the total local budget proposal to $304,589,218. Our federal grants fund is based on the 2324 federal allotments plus an estimate for carryover, bringing our total to $91,557,348. We don't yet have our 2425 planning allotments from NCDPI. Revisions for actual carryover and allotments will be incorporated into the budget when they have been released. So the State Public School Fund, the Local Current Expense Fund, and the Federal Grants Fund make up the revenue sources for the 2425 operating budget. While the North Carolina state funding provides the largest percentage of operating revenue, you can see here that the volume of federal funding is not as much as it was in the past few years due to the expiration of ESAR funds. We have been talking about September 2024 for a long time, and it will be here soon. The resulting decrease in funding will have an impact that we will feel across the district. State revenues account for 55% of the proposed 2425 operating budget, where local revenues make up the second-largest percentage at 35%, leaving federal to support 10% of the operating budget. Again, with ESAR funding expiring, we will continue to see the federal piece of the pie decrease. When examining how money is spent in the operating budget, the majority of the funding clearly supports our employees' compensation and related benefits shown here for 2425 at 78%. Purchased services, such as contract services, utilities, and insurance, count for 9% of the operating budget. Supplies and materials are 7%, and transfers account for 6% of the overall operating budget. The transfers' dollar amount is so high because it includes the transfers to charter schools. As we look at the expenditures from a different perspective, by purpose function, you can see that 78% of our operating budget is slated for direct school expenditures. Support services are 7%, with transfers to charter schools at 5% and transportation services accounting for 5%. You also see that technology makes up 2% of the budget, while utilities account for 2% and maintenance support accounts for 1% of the total operating budget. We could have the highest-paid local supplement for teachers if we weren't paying out nearly $44 million to charter schools. So our total budget recommendation for 2425 includes the $485,033,601 projected in the state fund. The local current expense fund, including the county appropriation, totals $304,589,218. The federal grants fund projection, based on current year allotments and the estimated carryover, is $91,557,348. The decrease from the prior year in federal funds is reflective of the decrease in the ESAR funding. The capital fund request is at $17.7 million. School nutrition for 2425 is at $52,592,300. The after-school enrichment services, or ACES, fund is $66,236,175, and the special revenue fund is currently projected at $9,968,000, bringing the total recommended budget to $967,676,345. Keeping in mind the 2425 estimated operating fund increase request and forecasting some future budget considerations, I want to lift up that we anticipate our Guilford Enterprise Management System, or GEMS, to go live on January 1, 2025. This system will fully replace legacy systems that are more than 30 years old. We are focusing on transportation efficiency by doing several things that we believe will help us improve our current transportation budget. As Dr. Slade shared in March, the Technology Division is working on a lifecycle replacement plan for future device purchases, warranties, and repairs. The school closings, in alignment with the facilities master plan, have helped to eliminate inefficiencies in operating small schools and have provided a greater number of students with state-of-the-art learning environments. Finally, the purchase of the Better Together Campus consolidates most of our administrative staff onto a single campus to better collaborate and serve our families and realize operating efficiencies without using bond dollars. So again, here you can see the next steps in the projected budget process timeline. Again, if the budget is approved, budget request is approved this evening, we will not have to have the May 14 meeting. We are required, and we will be able to provide the county with the budget request this week rather than having to wait to the statutory required date of May 15. The May 16, the county manager is scheduled to present his budget recommendation to the commissioners, and then they'll hold their public hearings, or their work sessions, I'm sorry, throughout May and June. and then they'll hold their public hearings, or their work sessions, I'm sorry, throughout May and June. They'll hold their public hearing on June sixth, and adopt their budget on June twentieth. We are scheduled to bring you an interim budget resolution on June twenty-seventh if all the other state and federal funds have not already, have not been approved at that time.
So I'll just close out with a reminder of the budget priorities. We talk about GCS being the best choice for students in Guilford County because of the educational opportunities, supports, and services that we provide all students. Our students and families are getting a great return on their investment, not with what we offer, not just some kids, but all kids who enter our schools and classrooms across the county. We talked about the pending end of the ESER federal relief dollars and how that will impact operations. And then, of course, last, we talked about the proposed twenty-four twenty-five budget. So the funding that we're requesting is proposed to help us pay our hard-working classified staff a living wage, meet our legislatively mandated requirements, sustain our operations, and continue to provide support for students that they so desperately need to recover from pandemic learning loss, and of course, to invest in our teachers so that we are not the last in teacher pay. While we have made much progress, as was shared earlier, we have a long way to go, and we must retain the staff and the instructional tools we need to complete the work. So with that, we'll open up for any questions.
Kim, and then Michael.
Yes, on page five, when you say growth in charter school enrollment and those numbers and charter school per pupil amount, is that a non-negotiable amount no matter what we receive back from, like, from the county? Those numbers will not change, so if they don't fully fund what we ask, their numbers stay the same, that number stays the same.
So the two point seven million number stays the same. That's the growth in actual number of charter school students. So that is, we're going to have to pay that if that...
No matter what?
Right.
They get theirs off the top?
Right.
No matter what we get funded, they will automatically be guaranteed that number?
If their enrollment hits our projections.
If that enrollment hits that projection.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to be...
Yeah, the one point one million is if we get the eight point three million from the county, then we have to send another one point one, we have to send one point one million of that to charter schools as an increase in their per pupil amount.
Okay. I noticed that we do not have any information in regard to how many students actually attend private schools in Guilford County? Is there a reason why we don't include those enrollment numbers? Or because I heard them say, you know, about the increase in the vouchers and how it impacts our budget?
So it doesn't impact our local budget. We're not required to send any local dollars to private schools for students that reside in Guilford County that attend a private school. So that doesn't affect our local budget in the same way charter students do.
Okay, thank you.
Michael.
Thank you, several questions. First thing I'd like to start off with, last board meeting, we had a discussion about students leaving Guilford County schools. And Dr. Oakley, can you give me an update on how many students left Guilford County schools last year?
No, but I'd be happy to share the number, and you would have to tell me if you mean because they relocated, because they graduated. Oh, the expulsion?
Yes.
Yes, there was, brought to our attention last board meeting, one reported on the DPI website. That was actually a data entry error that's been corrected on our end. We have not, we did not have a student expulsion last year and have not had for some time, so we've put in a request to change the state report.
So no child has had to leave Guilford County school because a Guilford County school expelled them. So any child that left Guilford County school left of their own, parents pulled them out, they didn't want to go. Conditions within the schools. We do focus on the supplement to the teachers, and I think teachers should get a supplement and should be increased. But I do not think that we need to base that by doing an increase in the supplement that we're going to retain teachers. Because as it is right now, Charlotte is the second highest supplement, but they have eighteen point two percent turnover. Durham is the third highest supplement, they have twenty-one point one. We're in the fifth, and we're at eighteen point three. So necessarily, while I want money for the teachers, I also want to make sure that, I don't expect that to fix teacher turnover. I really think we need to look at conditions within the schools and the environments within the school. And if a teacher, one thing I would like to add also, if a teacher leaves Guilford County schools, can they get a job in a charter school?
Yeah, I mean, unless there's something personnel-wise that would prevent that from happening, they can get a job.
The reality is the opportunity...
There isn't even anything personnel-wise because they don't need to be licensed.
That's true. If they check over France.
So the potential of a teacher leaving Guilford County schools and getting a job is valid, correct? Would they have a trouble? I mean, I didn't have, after last April, I didn't have trouble. I had someone call me, reached out to me and asked for me. So I really think teachers, while you look at the opportunity scholarship, remember, we're not pushing kids out of school, they're choosing to leave. And so that is what we need to focus on, is the environment within our schools. Thank you.
Kim?
On page twenty-one, in reference to ACES fund, and I noticed that there's a decrease. Is there a reason, you anticipate a decrease, or is that a typo?
No, I think it's probably got something to do with the health insurance increase and the retirement rate decrease, and maybe those, I mean, it's a slight decrease, but it's not a typo. And then this year, we've used some fund ballots that we don't anticipate needing to use next year, so...
No, because I thought that was an enterprise, I thought that ACES is self-sufficient. So that's why I was thinking that maybe, are we going to close another program or something impacted ten thousand dollars there?
Not that...
I have maybe not a question, but a couple of comments. One, I think the fact that we have tens of thousands of students in this school district says something about people that want to be here and that people who are leaving for a variety of reasons is not the evidence that, you know, people aren't doing great things in this school district. Two, the problems in the school district are not all of the things that are within the control of the school district. We have housing decisions that were made decades ago that have concentrated poverty in ways that students that go to some schools and teachers and employees that work at some schools are overwhelmed with just about every negative social determinant you can imagine and are not adequately compensated nor equipped with the things to address that, nor should they have to do that. We're dealing right now with environmental burdens in our community. We're getting ready to take toxic soil from one community with students and our workforce in that place and move it to another one. And so I just think again, and to even suggest that the supplements are adequate compensation is some more misinformation. Just because people are getting supplements don't mean that they're getting the compensation that they deserve. And I do think that we need to talk about some alternative ways to bring all of our workforce up to adequate compensation. And Jill, I'd like for you to explain, I know Commissioner Alston, at our joint facilities meeting, we were talking about sales tax, and I don't know if everyone understands exactly what's that process and what does that mean? Because I do think that, you know, being one of the largest employers in this county, I mean that our employees are paying taxes. And so, you know, they're taxed in all kinds of ways, they're contributing to the tax base, they're taxed. And what we're asking people to do, the criteria that people have to meet to teach in our schools isn't proportionate to what we're paying them. And so this, what, isn't mathing, is that what they say it is? So anyway, I just think that, if you could say a little bit about, you know, that whole process, because I do think, you know, I don't want us just to have one game in town, and that's the general assembly, you know, just the state, and the county's doing everything they can. We are a significant portion of their budget, and this county commissioner group supports public education. And so can you say a little bit about this sort of sales tax that's been brought up? Just so we can start having a conversation about it.
For those of you who were at the Joint Facilities Committee, I think that's where it came up. I'm not sure it came up in a forum where everybody was there. But for those of you who were at the Joint Facilities Committee meeting, there was a discussion about a quarter cent sales tax and about trying to find a way to make it clear to the public that that money would be dedicated to raising compensation for employees. The law on quarter cent sales tax is that the ballot is very bland. You'll remember, maybe from last time, it says, it says something like, and I probably have the exact language somewhere, but it doesn't much matter. It says something like, "For a quarter cent sales tax." I mean, it doesn't say what you're going to use it for, and it's not permitted under the law to say what you're going to use it for. So one of the tasks I would be, think you would probably want me to undertake if you were interested in doing this, is to write a resolution, and then the county would write a similar resolution saying what they would dedicate that source of funds for, so as to not supplant. Because frankly, guys, you don't have a great motivation in saying, you know, "Put in a quarter cent sales tax and then cut us somewhere else," that doesn't really advance your ball, right? So what you would want to say in a resolution is that we support a quarter cent sales tax to be used to increase compensation to our employees without supplanting other sources of funds. And if you were interested in something like that, you could ask me to do that, and I'd start working on that.
So is that a serious motion?
Yeah, I move that we draft that resolution.
All right, discussion? Deborah?
The only feedback I would give is that I can say with pretty much complete confidence that our Senator Michael Garrett would be happy to support this at state level because he's brought it up before.
All right. We can just go by and take a vote. Chrissy? Linda?
Just to be clear, I'm sorry to interrupt.
There's a resolution, there's a motion to draft a...
To draft the resolution, because we don't have the resolution.
Right. Alan?
Yes.
Betty? Deborah? Michael? Kim?
Yes.
Diane? And Deana, yes, that passes unanimously.
We'll bring that to you at the next meeting.
Thank you. We are now at...
And I will try to give it to you before the next meeting, so you've read it.
Okay, so we will not have a meeting on the fourteenth, the next meeting is on the twentieth first. And we're now at, no other business?
We need to approve the budget.
Oh, geez. I thought we got to the resolution.
Yeah, you guys have it on the budget.
All right, so we don't have to come back on the fourteenth.
I want a motion to...
I'm glad the chair moved that we approved the budget recommendation to go to the county commissioners.
I'll second that.
All right. She approved them, you have a question? That's fine, that's fine. What's your question?
Okay, so I just wanted to verify so that people are aware of it. How much money are we losing from ESER expiring this year?
We received a total of two hundred and eighty-eight million dollars that we had until September twenty-fourth, the incumbent, and we are on track to expend all of those dollars.
Okay, I just want to make sure that people heard that. And the other thing that I would just like to know, and I know this is a really broad question that isn't an easy one to answer, is what, because it's kind of hard to tell from all of this, what sorts of things are we doing to find financial efficiencies and make cuts to the budget in order to try to, you know, make the best value of the dollars that we do have and stretch them as far as we can?
I can start, and you can fill in the gaps. I mean, so I think just in terms of exploring philanthropic partnerships, we spend a lot of energy doing that. That's how we got the twenty-six million, you know, around the mental health and all of the telehealth pieces. And so being open and aggressive about pursuing grant opportunities or other philanthropic partnerships is one. We're lean, you saw that seventy-eight percent of dollars are direct school expenditures, and most of that is salary and compensation costs. I think we know we had to do one-time things to just get through this year's budget that we can't do again. And then, of course, closing schools to realize more efficiencies. So, you know, we've made a big step this year, we got to continue the facilities master plan. Are there any others you would add?
Yeah, I mean, I think we did identify two million dollars, which does include closing the schools that we were closing for this year to redirect to the budget request. We also, you know, talked about, we anticipate as we get our GEMS system up and going that that's going to be a much more efficient system, and it's going to help us identify dollars that, right now, it's just hard for us to see in the budget because we don't have a wholly integrated system where HR and payroll and finance are all talking to each other. So we think that that may identify some resources that are available. We do know we're working on transportation efficiency that'll help us manage our transportation budget better. But also, the higher our efficiency rating is, the more funding we get from the state, the less local funding we have to use for transportation. We got the Better Together Campus where, you know, we think that that's going to increase some efficiencies just having everybody together in one place. And again, as we talked about, closing smaller schools that are less efficient to run and, you know, having students in our state-of-the-art schools with a larger capacity. Those are, you know, surely there's a tipping point, but those are much more efficient to run, those larger schools. So those are some things that we're doing right away to help redirect or have savings and operate more efficiently so we can redirect resources to students.
Great, and I absolutely love that, and, you know, encourage across the system to continue looking at things that will help us find places where we can make those cuts. I thought the decision about the new school board property was a really, really fiscally wise decision to be able to take excess properties that we have and not have to use bond dollars to be able to get a new facility that's going to benefit so many people in this system, so I love that. And then I have one final question, which is, I understand that letters were sent out to the municipalities asking for additional funding from them about, I think the ones that I saw were based around high dosage tutoring. And so in sort of imaginary world, if this budget passes tonight, and then if it goes to the commissioners and passes, and if those groups are willing to put forth the money that's been requested, how would we be dealing then with sort of an excess of funds that we're getting from them? What would that situation look like?
I don't think it would look like an excess.
I mean, I said imaginary world, imaginary world.
Yeah, I mean, so we are on track to spend about eleven million dollars on tutoring this year. And I think we'll reach four hundred and fifty thousand tutoring sessions this academic year. So we haven't asked for that much, and we know we can spend it, and we know we have a system in place to do it.
So the focus in general would be those funds would be committed towards the tutoring?
That's correct, that's correct.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all I had.
Michael?
Angie, contracted services. Can you tell me where we have cut anything in contracted services other than busing? Because I know we have tried to reduce per student and some of the other busing to increase our busing efficiency. But where else have we cut?
So immediately, I mean, I could go back and do some more research, but immediately I think of the schools that we've closed, some of those had contracted custodial services. And so we've been able to, will be able to reduce the contracted services for those schools. I can't think of anything right off the top of my head, but I have to go back and look and see. We haven't, because we've got to use them for swing space. Yeah, we haven't cut utilities in those schools we're closing because we're going to have to use them for swing space. But that'll be, because contracted services includes utilities and liability insurance and all that, you know, as well. So once we close the buildings, we'll have savings in utilities. The same thing for when we are able to consolidate our central office and we are able to sell these properties, we'll have savings in utilities and some of the maintenance and care for the buildings. A lot of our contracted services that we're seeing right now are because we're having to contract things like HVAC repair, plumbing, because we can't get the staff on board to provide those services. So a significant number of what we're spending in contracted... So a significant number of what we're spending in contracted services are because we're short on staff. So our hope is, as we continue to implement the classified salary plan, that we'll be able to attract and retain staff, and so we can not spend as much on contracted services to have to maintain.
Can I clarify on that a little bit? So basically, increasing the pay for those employees will reduce our contracted staff pay?
I think that's part of the hope.
Amounts, part of it.
I think that's part of the hope, is that we'll be able to staff, have more than three plumbers in the district so that we can not have to call somebody every time there's a clogged drain or whatever plumbers do.
Pay your employees so you don't have to pay somebody else.
All right, there's a motion and a second for the budget. I'll start down here. Kim?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Deana, yes, that passes unanimously. We have no other business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
I'm sorry?
Some move.
Hold on, just a minute. Michael?
Hold on, hold on.
We're not going to get out of here that easy. We have a situation going on within our community. I move to have an open discussion among board members to discuss student show of support for Palestine at Grimsley on May fifteenth. Do I have a second?
Second. You didn't, this doesn't fall under other business because there was not a discussion or an agreement made prior to the board meeting to discuss that?
I'm not sure if that's how parliamentary procedure works. Can you give us a clarification on that?
Well, you had an opportunity, when you approved the agenda, to add something, and that wasn't done. So I don't believe even under any procedure you can add a topic at the end of the meeting.
If we so choose, could we still have the discussion?
What does that mean, if you so choose?
If we as a board choose to have this discussion publicly, can we have this discussion?
If a majority of you vote to amend the agenda at the end of the meeting?
Yes.
I mean, I suppose, but it should have been done at the beginning of the meeting.
Well, we just didn't have a discussion, Mr. Logan. I mean, if you would have called and said, you know, could we have this discussion? We did talk about some of this and as a board...
I think I sent you an email.
I know you did, but you did not ask me, could we have a conversation about this? You said what you didn't want to happen, so you did not call me. Like, we asked board members to call prior to board meetings to talk about things that they want to be on the agenda. So if you want to make a motion to amend the agenda at this point, then go ahead.
I make a motion that we amend the agenda.
Sir, second?
I'll second it.
All right. Chrissy?
Sure, I have no problem having a discussion, yes.
Linda?
Yeah.
Alan?
I have no confidence it would be a discussion, so no.
Betty?
No.
Michael?
Yes.
Kim?
No.
Diane? She might be gone. She's gone. And Deana, no. That fails by a vote of five to three. So there's a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good evening, and thank you, staff, and visitors, and speakers.